It's 10:30. Agenda item, pardon?
Just keep it going.
Yeah, we're moving along here. Agenda item 44 for possible action. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. What do you have, Mayor Protem? Anything?
We do. Madam Mayor, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn, tabled, or stricken. Item 59 N60, SUP 77365 and SDR 77366, applicant owner 900 Fremont LLC at 916 Fremont Street. It's being held in abeyance to the December 18, 2019, and it was requested by the applicant. Item number 61, the report from, yep, our city manager Scott Adams, has been stricken, and that is my motion.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote and please post. Well done. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We are on to agenda 45. Okay, item number 45 through 53 may be considered in one motion, one vote, or considered routine non-public public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Agenda item 45, GPA 77202, applicant SC Eastland Co. LLC at All, owner Eastland LLC, and a request for a general plan amendment from PCD Plan Community Development SC Service Commercial to TND Traditional Neighborhood Development and related item. Number 46, C0N77203, on a request for rezoning from U1 Develop, PCD Plan Community Development SC Service Commercial, General Plan Designations to TD Traditional Development, 1.46 acres, generally located west of Sky Point Drive, approximately 635 feet south of Kyle Canyon Road in Ward 6 with Mayor Protem Fiori. Number 47, GPA 77369, applicant New Quick Lane, owner DAF LLC and La Tulip Trust, on a request for a general plan amendment from SC Service Commercial to GC General Commercial on 1.33 acres, related item 48, PAC 7737, on a request for a petition to vacate public drainages, and related item 49, SDR 7737, on a request for a site development plan review for proposed 27,687 square foot auto repair garage, major, and auto parts accessory installation facility with two auto dealer inventory storage buildings with a waiver to not provide consistent level of detailing and finish on all sides of the building where such is required. Related item 50, TMP 77372, and a request for a tentative map for a one lot commercial subdivision on 2.71 acres located west side of Rancho Drive, 215 feet north of Red Coach Avenue C2, General Commercial Zone, Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Number 51, RQR 77462, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner Andrea Susan Russo, and a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 4693, for a 40-foot tall 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 6431 West Charleston Boulevard C1, Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, Councilman Knutson. Agenda item 52, RQR 77501, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner 711 Inc., on a required review of an approved special use permit, U-0315-94, for a 40-foot tall 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 670 West Sahara Avenue C1, Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, Councilman Knutson. The agenda item 53, SUP 77300, applicant Paymon Ralph, owner KAP Holdings LLC, and a request for a special use permit, proposed 6,571 square foot liquor establishment tavern restricted use with 1,215 square feet of outdoor seating area with waivers to allow a 330-foot distance separation from a church house of worship and 1,150 feet from a similar use where 1,500 feet is required at 8380 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 150, C1, Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, Councilman Knutson. Staff recommends approval on all items, planning commission recommends approval on item numbers 45 through 50 and 53. These are all public hearings, which I declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on agenda items number 45 through 53? I'll close public hearing, seeing none. And Mayor Protem, is there anything that you want to add, Mr. Summerfield here?
No, ma'am. All of these items are in order.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mayor Protem, may I have the one motion, one vote, items 45 through 53?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the one motion, one vote, items 45 through 53.
Wonderful, thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. Those motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda items 54 through 58. Let me double check. Most are clear. Right. Okay, 54, GPA 77383, and a request for a general plan amendment from PCD Plan Community Development SC Service Commercial to SC Service Commercial. Number 55, Z0N77384, and a request for rezoning. Number 56, SUP 77385, on a request for a special use permit for proposed 5,525 square feet liquor establishment tavern use. Number 57, SUP 77386, request for a special use permit for proposed 5,175 square foot beer wine cooler off sale establishment use. And number 58, SDR 77387, a request for a site development plan review for proposed 108,584 square foot shopping center with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer standards and not to orient the buildings to the corner or the street frontage where such is required. The applicant is Tower Industries LLC, the owner is Pacific Land Fund One LLC at All on 12.63 acres northwest corner of Iron Mountain Road and Sky Village Road, U1 Develop, PCD Plan Community Development SC Service Commercial, General Plan Designations Zone, proposed C1 Limited Commercial. On all items, staff recommends denial and the planning commission recommends approval. These are in Ward 6 with Mayor Protem Fiori, are public hearings, which I declare open. And is the applicant a representative?
Yes, John Sullivan, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
So what we have here is a 11.63 acre site on the northwest corner of Iron Mountain and Sky Village Drive, just attached to the northwest portion of Sky Canyon, but not within the Sky Canyon development. We're here on five matters. You mentioned some of them being denied by staff. We've had a process of working with both staff and Planning Commissioner DeSalvio and Mayor Protem Fiori's office, and I think we've worked past the issues that, with the exception of one, that were being objected to. And I'll walk through those. To the south of us is a Toll Brothers residential development. To the east is property owned by Station Casinos, still scheduled to be a future casino site. And then to the north and west of us is undeveloped vacant land. The project itself, as mentioned, is 108,000 square foot shopping center development. So some of the issues that were raised, so we have a general plan amendment request to move to service commercial, as well as a zoning request to move to service commercial, and then two special use permits, one to address the C store here with the beer wine cooler off premise sales, and one to address a tavern over here.
Excuse me, is the beer wine sales, that, those aren't gas, I mean, yeah, gas tanks?
So up front here is the gas tanks, and then here is the C store facility?
Okay. And can you go back to the map showing how that fits?
Sure. If I'm matching with the map, it would look like this. So southern Iron Mountain Road here, Sky Village here.
Can you put it side by side so we could see the yellow and...
Yeah, and whichever direction.
Yeah, so, right, right, okay.
So if I may, Mayor Protem, any interest in the property to the south that's going to be a residential block of homes, right up against the...
It's Toll Brothers, it's owned by Toll Brothers Homes, will be residential.
The gas.
Are you proposing to put the gas station right next to the Toll Brothers Homes?
Correct, on that double section line corner of Iron Mountain and Sky Village. But it, we've already addressed with Toll Brothers, so we've met with them, we've agreed to take within our landscaping here to add a berm to the landscaping, as well as bolstering the landscaping itself, to remove that from the residential. They're satisfied with both the center and the landscaping change.
I just worry about the gas, and, you know, we've had that, I think, up in Ward 4, that we had an issue with the gas station abutting residential property. And we moved the gas tanks away from the residential. So that's just a point, as you go through whatever you're going through, and not to create more problems, but the history is that in Ward 4, there was such a proposal for the gas tanks, and that we had a really big pushback on Ward 4, and so ultimately they had to be moved around. So please continue, and then we're going to hear from Mr. Summerfield.
Right, and conceptually, being on a double section line with what looks like to be a casino across the street, it's kind of the right orientation for development, but open to the discussion that we're going to have here on it. So we're here for those two special use permits, the design review as well as the, or a design review being the last of that.
Okay.
So at this point, the center itself will be a grocery anchored, will have some drive-through restaurants and common shops. The only waiver that's left in there with a staff denial is the requirement under 1908 to push all the buildings to the edge of the property, and I think it's a very common opposition from development. It just sort of creates a big field of parking and doesn't really create any sort of architectural dynamics between the various buildings from an aesthetic standpoint. And so that's the only one that we're left with, and I think we've walked through everything else. There was a couple of landscaping waivers that we've removed. So the landscaping on both sides is at the 15-foot requirement. As I mentioned already, on the Iron Mountain side across from Toll Brothers, we've also added a berm at their request. There was a reduction in the number of trees that were in the parking field, that's been fully met up to code, and we're still more than overparked. So the only thing left is really that one exception.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to you, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, so clarity for the record, the staff recommendation on the general plan and the rezoning has moved to an approval recommendation that is updated from what was in the agenda summary page and is listed in the agenda. As a result of additional review, staff does find that the amended requests to service commercial and limited commercial respectively are appropriate designations and zoning district that is compatible with the existing adjacent land use designations. And so, as mentioned, staff is recommending approval of the general plan and rezoning. However, the applicant has proposed a shopping center design that requires the approval of these waivers, where no exceptional or extraordinary conditions exist with the site to justify those waivers. Specifically, as mentioned, the, there's no irregularly shaped lot, there's no reason that the parking lot landscaping and the building orientation could not meet requirements, as you pointed out, Mayor, with that residential development to the south, the, and we have this in Summerlin, we have it in other places, that gas station could be oriented differently to put the building more towards the street corner instead of the gas pumps and things like that, that our code doesn't prefer. And as a result of those waivers being self-imposed and preferential in nature, staff has recommended denial of the site development review and thus the accompanying special use permits. The uses themselves are not necessarily at issue, but because of the site design issues, we're recommending denial of the SUPs as well.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone wishing to make comment on any of the items 54 through 58? Okay, I'm going to close public hearing. And council members, any comments, questions? Okay. Mayor Protem, yours?
Okay, so I know we've discussed this in length, and I just want to make sure as we move forward that we have the ability to change things, that we're not stuck the way that we're looking at it today. Mr. Summerfield?
So, Madam Mayor, through you to the Mayor Protem. So, I mean, this is the site design that's being approved today. As they get into it more, if they wanted to reorient something, they would have that ability to amend this until they actually, obviously, begin the site improvements that will construct this shopping center. I don't know what their timing is on that. If it's a relatively minor change, then it can be done administratively, it wouldn't require another public hearing, either at the planning commission or city council. If it's a significant change, then that may necessitate that it would come back if they do some additional work on this project.
And when are we planning on actually doing this?
So the timing is still, there are a few tenants on the site interested, and it's not even, it's not fully anchored at this point as well. So it's, the timing will be dictated by the movement of the homes. It's just, as it, it's always important to get slightly ahead of those homes and have it here so that grocery stores know this is a real site and know that they can have a discussion about moving to it.
How close is the Smith Marketplace to it?
I don't, I think our map would show, but I, actually, I don't have a broad enough area, and I don't have that exactly, Mayor Protem. But we've been in communication with Sky Canyon, and they don't have issue with us. What they wanted to make sure, which we've agreed to, is that we were landscaped fully and that we agreed to a landscape palette that would go along with Sky Canyon, and we are agreement with both of those.
Right, so in Ward 6, like, there's no palm trees, there are 36 inch boxes, like, Ward 6 is the aesthetically pleasing ward.
Right, palms are only for decoration and don't qualify for any of the landscape requirement.
So I'm looking at this, and it is in the future, and I just want to make sure that we are on the right page with this. So I'm going, Madam Mayor, do you have any other suggestions that you want to add to this?
Well, only, everything surrounding it, that you're very aware what you're planning, and hopeful of seeing what's there.
So you know what else I want to talk about for a minute? Trails. Robert Summerfield? Because this is, this is important where this is, and it's a future site, and I think if we don't cover everything out there, around there, to make sure we have trails on everything as well with the mature trees, like...
Right, and I apologize, I don't have a trails map with me, but I can definitely connect with your office and show you where the existing planned trails are. And as we continue to work with Sky Canyon through their parks element that they have as a part of their agreement, because they are adjacent to this site and how the trail might interface towards this location. But we do have the trails element that lays out where those future trails would be currently, and that is being updated as a part of your 2050 master planning effort that is going on. And we've been working specifically with the northwest community on things like trails, because you do have a lot of trails in, within your ward.
Well, that whole section, I mean, if you look at that whole section, whatever's going to come about, I want to make sure all of these parcels are all interconnected with trails and stuff to where we're not. Do you understand my vision?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I think that's really important, Mayor Protem, if I may say, because, you know, it's really the last bastion of open space ranchette type living, as we're seeing the huge development in the southwest and Henderson. If people want to live that lifestyle, no lights and bridle paths and things, that the overlay of what you've just cited is really important as you go through the development, and not that there's anything at all, to me, other than remembering Councilman Anthony with that gas station abutting the residence, and they turned it, is what they did. So I don't know if this applicant then comes back to you again over a period of time, because it's all in the sort of, to me, it seems very general right now, and you want to do all this stuff.
Right. So, Mr. Summerfield, for the record, I just want to make sure that it is clear that as we go forth with this, as we go forth with approving this, that it's movable, we've got trails, and it's workable. Because right now, the way it sits, and because there's no houses budding it today, but you know there will be, I just don't want to put the cart in front of the horse, and I want to make sure that we're developing, you know, at a rate of when, and it's difficult to say.
So, Madam Mayor, Protem, through you, Madam Mayor. So yes, so there is that opportunity, and if we were looking at just reorienting the gas station, the convenience store, that would not be a significant change, and so that would be something we could do administratively, so it would not slow down the development process, but would be something that we could look at. I will get that trails map, so you can see where we're at, and we can have some additional conversation around any gap areas where we don't currently have connections. And then I just wanted to point out, because you did ask the question, on the map that the representative has, the Smiths is actually that white box that's towards the lower right-hand corner of that map. So there's, you know, what would that be, two miles, I think, or a mile, whatever that distance is there going up the road there. So they're in proximity, but they still have a significant amount of development that will be between them at buildout for that master plan community.
And I just worry, I worry, I mean, Smith's Marketplace, you know, hands down, kudos, my favorite place. I mean, I get wine and cheese while I shop, so. But with Amazon, with anchoring grocery stores, it's difficult, it's difficult for our retail stores now. So I just want to make sure that as we're planning and we're looking forward, and then everything else on that site, the way you have it laid out here, you know, you have retail and this and a tavern, and I want to make sure we can move things around.
It is a very general site plan, and it will be moved around.
Because if I need feet separation and stuff, I know we're working on door-to-door, I just want to be able to move things around the closer we get to growth out there.
And, Madam Mayor, through you to the Mayor Protem, so these use permits that are going to prove these uses on the site, those are attached to the site, not necessarily, you know, to, so with distance separation, that's not going to be an issue if they need to move it, if they, you know, find that the tavern building is better, you know, towards the southeast part of the site versus the northwest part of the site where I think they have it now, that can all be accommodated within an administrative update to the special use permits.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, so let's take them one at a time. You want to start with number 54, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm going to motion to approve 54 with everything, all the words I just said and Robert Summerfield said.
There's a motion to approve Agenda item 54. Please vote and please post. Did you vote?
It's not I.
Okay, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda item 55, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I motion to approve Agenda item 55 with all conversation.
Thank you. There's a motion on 55. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. On 56, please.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve item 56 with all conversation.
Thank you. There's a motion on 56 to approve. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. And on 57?
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve item 57 with all items spoken with.
Thank you. There's a motion on 57, subject to all conversation as part of the approval. That motion carries. And finally, Agenda item 58.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I motion to approve Agenda item 58 with all conversation.
Thank you very much. There's Agenda item 58. Please vote and please post. Finally, that's approved. Very exciting. We look forward to it.
Thank you, and thank you to Mayor Protem's office and to staff for taking what wasn't quite working with the city and turning it to an environment that works for both the developer and the city.
Looks exciting. We just love the northwest and watching the growth and what those opportunities are. Really is exciting. Did you want to add something?
Mayor, I think it can't go without being said, aesthetics are in the eye of the beholder, and I prefer the aesthetics of Ward 1, so, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Considering that I live in your ward, I will have to say I'm very partial there, too. But that's sweet. Okay, thank you very much. And Agenda items number 59 and 60 have been obeyed to the December 18 meeting, and so we move right along on, whoops, to Agenda item 62. Thank you. And this is a report from Brad Gerbick, City Attorney, regarding an update on the purchase-sale assignment of the Hunt Ridge Theater and four related parcels of real property located southeast corner of East Charleston Boulevard and South Maryland Parkway Lucky, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz, who we saw on television touring what there is of the Hunt Ridge left. And so, what, where, did... What happened? Is he coming? All right, what we're going to do is I'm going to, yeah, what I'm going to do is hold this, and I don't know what the proper is, or trail it, we'll go to 63, because I see our wonderful head of Office of Communications here, Mr. Riggleman, whose son is caught in the snow in Syracuse, about 20 feet deep, and here he could be in this wonderful climate of Las Vegas. Regarding changes in public communications, City of Las Vegas efforts to keep pace as well as set trends. Reference to all wards.
Mayor, thank you so much. For the record, my name is David Riggleman, I'm Communications Director for the City of Las Vegas. I think it's no surprise to any of us that over the last several years of our lives, the way people communicate has dramatically changed, no question about it. When I first started at the city in 1999, if you can believe it, Oscar Goodman had just been elected mayor, and we had just launched this new-fangled thing called the website. And also, coming around at that time was this other new thing called email. And right on the heels of that, we also launched our television station, KCLV, Channel 2, government access television, considered groundbreaking at the time. All of these were major accomplishments, but you look back now, and those are really commonplace things that people consider as tools that everyone should have moving forward anyway.
But your studio, if I may interrupt, was far below what has been created.
Well, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
That you did do it.
We've come a long way. But it's funny how those things were considered so high-end and so groundbreaking at the time, and now they're considered just things that are standard tools to have. So I've got a short video that I'd like to show you here. It kind of encapsulates all the things that are now on our plate, and then we'll talk about where we hope to take the organization in the future. So with Jeff, if you could, please play the video.
Go on, give me a video, yeah, well.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. So, obviously, things are changing, and what we want to make sure is that we're changing along with the times. We want to make sure that our organization stays relevant and that we're communicating with the public in the way that they hope to communicate. When I first started at the city, it was common for people to send us a letter, but mostly to pick up the telephone and just speak with us that way. Well, I want to show you some statistics that are very interesting. No question, people are still using the phone, but look at some of these numbers. This is for the last year alone. This is how we've received correspondence and messages and questions are coming in in a whole different way. For example, on Facebook, we've had 18,000 messages so far this year. Twitter, 26,000 messages. Live chat, 24,000, that's through our website during business hours. Formstack, that's also the website, nearly 37,000 messages have come in. This has created a situation, too, where the expectation in this day and age is that you respond in a timely way. Companies don't wait. If you reach out to them on social media, they're not going to wait until Monday to get back with you. They're going to reply. Same with us. We have the same attitude. If someone has a question about the book festival on a Friday night, we're not going to wait till Monday to reply because the book festival will be over by then. So I'm very proud of the fact that our team, my small and mighty team, these folks sitting right here and just back over here, will reply 40% of the time after hours. And that trend is something that is expected, I think, in this day and age. One of the things that's interesting about that is that we have bot technology to help, but a lot of these responses, our folks are handling and routing to the right staff outside of business hours. And I think that's a perfect example of the expectations that people have in this world today as the communications fly so quickly. A couple of other things I just want to point out. I'm really proud of the fact that our team has done something using the analytics that come with social media. Everything that you do on social is easy to track. And one thing they've done is a very deep dive into what posts on social media are resonating with people the most, what connect the most. And the response to that has been amazing. This last four months alone, our engagement on Twitter, because of these analytics and their efforts, are up 480%. On Facebook, I'm sorry, Instagram, 386%, and on Facebook, 35%. So, we're not just scattering messages out there and hoping that something sticks, we're sending messages out and then paying attention to what resonates, what are people connecting with, so that we can continue to communicate with them in those ways. So what are the things that people are finding the most interesting? I think, no surprise to anyone, emergency communications always garner a lot of attention. That post in the lower-left corner, some of these numbers are staggering. We posted during the earthquakes that took place last July 4th, here in southern Nevada and in southern California. On Twitter alone, we had a reach of 14 million people, 14 million people. On Facebook, we had a reach of about 45,000, but on Twitter, 14 million people. It shows you that duplicative and multiplicative effect of social media, how it just continues to flow and flow and flow, especially if the information is something that people connect with. One of the things that this tells us, and this is really important to note, is that our organization has emerged as one where people know that they can go to get accurate and timely information. In this day and age where there's so much so-called fake news out there, people are looking for where is their factual information, and our city is obviously one of those places. We saw that during the October 1 shooting. So many new people followed us to try to find out what was going on. And keep in mind, the October 1 shooting didn't even happen in our jurisdiction, it occurred in the county, but people were turning to the City of Las Vegas to get their information as to what exactly had happened and what was true. We saw that during the earthquake as well. Mayor, the post right there in the middle, I thought this was very interesting. We had our documentary last May, The City of Las Vegas, The Early Years. We wanted to get the word out that this documentary about our history was out there. This one post on Facebook, when we launched, reached 60,000 people, and on Facebook alone, that one post generated 21,000 views. That's not counting YouTube and all the other places it was. I was just on Facebook. Brad is going to talk to you about Project Enchilada. That project is one that has really resonated with people. Our posts on Project Enchilada on Facebook and on Twitter have generated about 90,000, 90,000 views. So people want to hear about that project. They want to know what's going on downtown. Interesting things, Mayor, you had talked to us about getting the word out about graffiti cleanup. We needed to get the word out more on our efforts to clean up graffiti within the city. You'll find this really interesting. That video that went with this has had 266,000 views and has been shared 235 times, had another 20,000 views on Twitter and has been shared 100 times. The interesting thing about that is, that isn't even, as well as that video's done, we've had others that have reached millions of people. The active shooter training that we had here a few years ago, here at City Hall, had somewhere north of 6 million views. So, again, we've seemed to be able to hit a stride where not only are we getting information out to people, but we're getting it in a format and in a way that they're actually paying attention to and engaging with. Wanted to add this, too. I think this is an important note. In the past, when we wanted to get the word out on something, we would issue a news release, and we would hope that the local news stations would pick it up, and if they didn't, well, then the information didn't really go anywhere. They were the gatekeepers of that information getting out to the public. Well, now, in this day and age, we have the ability to speak directly to our followers and to a wide audience. And what we've seen is that the news folks are also following us. So when we put out a post on social media, they're seeing it just as fast, probably faster than they would if we sent out a press release, one release going to one person on the desk. Now we post something that goes to all the people in the news media who are following us. An example, Mayor, about the graffiti. We posted the story and the video about the graffiti. The local TV stations all picked up on it and did their own stories about graffiti cleanup based on that tweet. Same with Fremont Street Experience, when they were going to upgrade, start the upgrade on the canopy. We had some posts about that. That put the word out to the news media, and the local TV stations jumped on the opportunity to cover that as well, as you see at the very bottom. Also, too, you never quite know who's out there watching as well. Our own Shane Savanna-Pritti put together a video about Kiara Brown, and you guys will remember Kiara was the young lady who wrote the song "58 Hearts" following the shooting on October 1, based on lyrics that she heard Mayor Goodman say at the dedication of the Healing Garden. That video that Shane put together and we posted on social helped launch her onto The Voice. She was a contestant on The Voice this past season. And again, that video, of course, they used Shane's video on the program, but that helped launch her and helped land her on the show. So, the reach that you have with these tools goes far beyond, I think, really anything that we imagined when we first started using them. Another tool that has been very helpful, one of the raps is our blog. One of the raps on social media is that the information is too short, and you can't go into great detail. Oftentimes, we're dealing with issues here at the city that are complex and take a lot of explanation. So what we've done is we've used our blog as a tool to help provide that additional information. So we'll put out a post on Twitter or on Facebook, and then allow people to link to the blog to get more information about an issue. And a perfect example is about homelessness. The blog of the information about the no camping or lodging ordinance that was passed at the last council meeting, it says 10,000 on your screen now. Actually, that number is up over 11,000 now. People have actually taken the time to read the blog. Last fiscal year, we had about 46,000 views of the blog. This year, and the number here is not updated, it says 27,000, it's 56,000 people since July have already visited our blog. So the idea is that we're going to use that as a tool to provide that additional information and give people the fuller story. Some people just want the thumbnail, some people want to know more of the information, and this is a tool that's allowed us to do it. I think one of the statistics that is really important to pay attention to on this is that 85% of those visitors were on a mobile device, their phone or on some other mobile device. They're looking at it in a way that's most convenient for them, but they're still taking the time to look at that information. Again, our team has done a really good job of packaging that information in a way that people are going to be able to read and digest. So that's turned out to be a great tool. This is one of the things that's always concerned me with, with social media, is that sometimes you're not able to give the full description of something. There was a lot of misinformation, as we knew, about our ordinance, and a lot of misunderstanding. This was an opportunity to help clarify fact from fiction as to what exactly was taking One of the things that we're obviously having to try to do is stay current with the trends. And my hope, obviously, as the Director of the Department, is to make sure as the world changes that we're keeping pace. Scott will always tell you about the Wayne Gretzky quote of how important it is to skate to where the puck is going to be, not where it is. And this has been a real challenge, especially with our television programming. You've probably heard the term cord-cutting. If you're not familiar with it, basically, it's the idea that people are dumping their traditional cable, and they're moving to watch programming on streaming apps like Netflix or Hulu or Roku or Apple TV or whatever it might be. Well, the predictions by the industry insiders are that within the next five years or so, about 60 million households, not people, households, will use these streaming apps as their main way of getting their television programming. Even the cable companies understand that really their future isn't in providing programming, it's providing high-speed internet, because you're going to need the internet one way or the other to be able to view this programming on these streaming apps. And they realize that, you know what, that's our future, is being able to provide that conduit to the internet so that people can view in a new way. The appeal here is you watch what you want, when you want to watch it, and you decide, as opposed to waiting. Traditionally, like when I was a kid, Wednesday night at 7 o'clock, my favorite show was coming on, whatever that might have been, I had to be there to watch it. If I didn't see it then, I was going to miss it. Well, you don't have that problem anymore. You can watch whatever you want, when you want to watch. So, what we've done at Channel 2, obviously, is we want to make sure that we're keeping pace. If we're a product that mostly lives on the cable system, Cox and on CenturyLink, if people are moving away from that, we want to make sure that our programming moves, too. So our programs like Access City Council, Hello Mayor, Trending Las Vegas, Trending Vegas, whatever it might be, are keeping pace with those changes. So, we're one of the first government stations in the country to have programming on Roku, Amazon Fire, and Apple TV. It's exciting. I think what we're going to have to do is pay attention to the analytics about, you know, what, how are we going to package our shows, what's going to connect with people on these new formats. But to me, that's exciting, because we get to kind of write our own ticket as to what will work, and that's the trend that we're heading right now. So a lot of the programs that you guys are involved with now live on these streaming channels. And finally, I just wanted to make the point, I think this is really key kind of to the message today, is that I see that our role is to not only help keep the organization in pace with where communication is going, but also city staff and also your staff members to make sure that we're keeping pace. If the world is communicating in a different way, that we're prepared and that we're still viable and connecting with people. My small team does a phenomenal job, but if we're still getting this many messages on Facebook and Twitter and the other platforms this year, it's only going to increase next year and the year after and the year after. So, to me, the message in that is that as an organization, we're going to need to have more people trained and proficient on using social media. It's going to be important. To me, that's one of our main roles, is helping train staff and train your staff members to be able to respond in these new ways. I'm confident we can do it. Councilman Anthony, I look at you. When I first came here, we started talking social media. I don't think you knew Facebook from Twitter, but you now are a monster on social media and do a very good job, and many of you do. So, as an organization, I know we can do this, but it's just going to take that training and making sure that we're prepared to get everybody up to speed. Because, like I say, our little team, there's no way that we're going to be able to keep up. We're going to need to have staff throughout the city trained on social and staff trained at your level, too, to make sure that we're keeping pace. We're going to continue to do things like monitor what's going on out there. We'll let you know what conversations are taking place about things in your ward. But at the end of the day, this is going to be something, it'll be a challenge for all of us, to make sure that we're staying up to speed with where the world is moving. And our job is to make sure that the organization is equipped to do that, so. Mayor, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you for your time and your attention today.
Well, I can tell you, I know we can't do anything without getting the word out. If you don't, if you just sit in your little igloo all by yourself all the time, nothing happens, and we would not have seen the growth, development, and loftier sense that our city's getting without everything that you and your wonderful team are doing. And so for those of us who watch during the day and see your little conversations, and I think of how backward it used to be and how forward-thinking you are, it's just great. So compliments certainly from all of us, but I don't know if anybody has any questions. Yes, please, comments, please. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really just have to say thank you to you and your whole staff. They have taught me so much, and what we, how we utilize the information via social media is just amazing. Social media is now making mailing easier and less expensive because we get to do what we do with your team, Nancy Byrne and Jennifer Davies and Diana and everyone, Shane, the whole thing, everyone, Jase, everyone. And I just want to thank you because without you, it would be difficult to get our message out.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate that.
And everybody has a wonderful time. When you talk to them every six weeks, I mean, it's really to find out what's going on in the wards.
I enjoy it.
I do hear it out on the street. They say they love to hear what's going on in the different wards, because they know pretty much around where they live, what they're doing, but what's going out in 4 or out in 3 and what things look like.
Mayor, there's no question that the public wants to hear from all seven of you. When you are on social media, when you're on television, when you're speaking to the public, they're listening. They want to connect with you. They want to hear what you have to say, and they want to interact with you as much as possible. That's very clear in everything that we see.
You know, there's something, and I know you work so diligently with our Innovation Center and with Mike Sherwood and his team, but, you know, I do see the future of confiscation of materials that are out there on the internet and taking, changing it. And I don't know how you, how you're addressing what's going on in other cities, where they may take a message of something and change it and resend it out. So, what we're doing with the criminalization of the social media, it's, I just know, and we can put in billions of dollars, and we're still not caught up. So, you know, it's a very interesting time. You've mentioned the word again and again, that information technology really is a tool, but it's getting, its head's getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, to the point of being overwhelming. And I just know there's a criminal aspect out there that hopefully in our, in your department, that you really have, are looking at that all, and that you're checking everything you're putting out there, that somebody isn't interfering or confiscating what you've put out there on a regular basis. It's very disconcerting.
It takes a lot of dedication, a lot, you have to pay attention all the time because the the world is changing frequently and rapidly. And someone is always figuring out a way to do things differently, good or bad. And so how we get around that is we just make sure that we're always monitoring what's being said. What are those conversations? What are they saying about us, your wards, so that we're on top of those conversations?
And watching it, because as you put the information out, it is reviewing what is out there, does it still look like what you sent it out?
Right, right. Don't want it to change.
I know this is, it's time-consuming. I know how you all work through these nights. I don't.
And you mentioned Michael Sherwood and his team. Obviously, the security of our systems is obviously a high priority, and he and Scott have really made sure that our organization is being protected as vastly as possible. It's difficult, because someone is always out there trying to think of something new. But I need to mention Michael, and from direction with Scott and Gary, that they've really done a tremendous job of keeping the city safe and protected from any kind of hacks from the outside.
We just know all the information's moving so quickly. So thank you, David.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Senator Mayor, real quick, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate the fact that I think you guys, our comp team does a great job. I know I drive everybody in my team to get things out, and you guys are very responsive and do a great job. And it also goes to our KCLV team, and all of our videographers that have traveled to Zion.
Yes, yes.
You know, parked with me and go to all of our events, and sometimes on the weekends, they're there, and it's just great, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Councilman. Thank you so much.
We have a long way to go. We have a lot of work to do, but your team does a, the whole team does a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, we're trying to figure out sometimes as the world changes, we're trying to stay abreast with it too.
Good, they're young. No, I'm looking at them very young.
Yes, that's, yeah, see? That's smart.
Very good. Thank you all. We really are grateful for everything you do, even into the middle of the night to keep up with what's going on.
Yeah, they do.
Everywhere. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
And Councilwoman, yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. We really are appreciative of all the efforts of the communications team, fabulous communications team we have here in this city. We're dynamic, we're responsive, and I think we're building a greater sense of community, because we are basically highlighting the amazing work and talents and blood, sweat, and tears that goes into the fabric of a city. And so I'm super grateful to have you guys working with us on this common mission. And anything we can do to help remediate the wonkiness sometimes of our forum stacks, I know that sometimes my colleagues.
I hear you.
Get my ward stuff, and I'll get their ward stuff, and I'll have complaints from my constituents about how to make it a little bit more user-friendly, or like to navigate the, to search for things that are happening in the city. So just feedback that I'm hearing that I wanted to relay, so that we can stay on top of it.
No worries, Councilman. We'll make sure with our IT folks, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we know. We feel your pain on that.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 64. This is very exciting also. It's a report by city staff regarding an update in various lifestyle considerations for capital component inventories for infrastructure, asset management and maintenance, asset management, excuse me, including projected five-year capital cost requirement in reference to all wards. So we have here our wonderful team, operations and maintenance and Public Works, and we thank you all the time for all that you do. So, who's first?
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry Walker, Director of Operations and Maintenance, and as mentioned with me, Mike Johnson, Director of Public Works. We're here today, as mentioned, to provide a report on infrastructure asset management and maintenance. This is the fourth such report. The first one was in 2013, requested by council to see how we were doing. As we're all aware, nationwide, a lot of cities don't do so well in their infrastructure maintenance. In 2013, we did some inventories, used then-current replacement values, came up with an estimate for our capital asset infrastructure value, replacement value of a little over $7 billion. In 2017, we updated that, added some categories we had forgotten, updated to the new values at that time, plus some growth that had occurred, and that came at just an over $9 billion. We missed a few items in that, including trees, which are 50,000 trees, 10,000 a tree, that's $500 million. So our current replacement value for our infrastructure asset inventory is approximately $10 billion. That's a significant amount of money. We have to stay on top of that. Things do depreciate, anywhere from a six-year to 120-year cycle, and so if we don't stay current, keep things in good working order, preventative and rehabilitative maintenance, we can get into trouble.
Those trees, where are they on that grid, right there, on that you just showed us? Where'd you put the trees?
Well, the trees are another asset value. I forgot to include them in 2017.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And you said, how many trees are there?
We have almost 50,000 trees, and estimated value of 10,000 each would be $500 million.
Thank you.
Okay. This summary is from the 2018 presentation. We were in 2017 estimating about a $14 million a year accrual in depreciation values. We had reduced that by 2018 with the expansion of FRI II funding for the roadways, both Public Works and Operation and Maintenance, some very aggressive Public Works street rehabilitation, or I'm sorry, sewer conveyance rehabilitation projects using new lining technology, expansion of operations and maintenance onto rehabilitative projects into sewer and flood control components. And so when we provided in 2018, we put our annual depreciation accrual at $6 million. That's the third bullet from the bottom. That is 0.07% or less of the total, and so we're staying in pretty good shape. Not to take all the credit, we have very favorable environmental circumstances, a little bit of limited precipitation, no freeze thaw. That's very helpful for the roadways and other components. We are a newer city, and so we are not experiencing older components failing at this point in time. And then we have dedicated funding streams, external funding streams from regional transportation and regional flood control, and then internal for the storm drain system. So we're staying in very good condition. I've highlighted in the bottom, though, our concerns at that point in time, and that is managed to fund capital needs in some of the smaller components, streetlight, traffic signal, park and facility areas, and that's what we're here to talk about today. Park maintenance asset categories, they fall into a few different components. Short-term operational, we pay for these out of operational cost. We address plumbing fixtures on a continuous basis, picnic tables, trash receptacles, those sorts of items. Midterm, this is what I'll present in just a minute, we have components that, again, will fail from six years up to about 30 years, playground equipment, soft-surface materials, skate parks, the rest listed there. Long-term, I don't have that in today's slideshow presentation. These would be more the 50-year components, but not addressed today. Organic, I just list that, because those are alternative or optional additional components which compete for our maintenance resources, 12 million square foot of the natural turf, 50,000 trees, as mentioned, and a million shrubs and plants throughout our parks and median islands and sidewalk amenities. And so, big inventory. I'm not going to go through this or reading in the components. This, I provided for information in case you'd like to look at it. This lists all of our various components, or the ones that I mentioned as the midterm, and this shows where we think we need to be replacing. And so I'll just address playground equipment. We've gotten some pretty old playground equipment out there. We do manage to keep it together, but there has to be an age of obsolescence, and so we think playground shouldn't go past 30 years. Those are the first three items up there. So I've broken it down on FY, the next five fiscal years, we're running about $2 to $2.5 million a year. You'll see a couple of bumps in '24 and '25. That's because the artificial turf comes due. Artificial turf's $4 to $5 a square foot, and it only lasts for 10 to 12 years, and so got about $9 million worth of that on a 10-year cycle. It adds up pretty quickly. I also provided fiscal year maps, so that you can see, and you can see within the parks where we are proposing to make replacements and upgrades. And so just again, for your reference, those components. The second category for operations and maintenance would be the facility assets. We've got about $750 million worth of facility components, and that's our proposed value on that. And so I'm going to give you another list of fiscal year components. You can see them showing there. You'll see that FY '25, we've got $9 million there. Part of that's just cycling, but part of that is we don't plan on doing any major renovations at the Fire Admin Building, or do the Jim Mooney Pool projects, which we can put off, because we don't know what the Highway 95 end-out widening project will do to them. And so we don't want to invest money unless we have to, or forced to by failure.
If I could ask on that, when you mentioned the fire and rescue, as we know, huge growth in the Northwest, a new fire station is planned, and how many more? How do you assess that? It's all population, or is it land coverage?
Well, maybe Mike would like to answer that. It would go through fire and rescue and Public Works, but I'll defer to Mike for that question.
Why don't you do it at the appropriate time? I don't want to slow you down, because you're moving, and I'm glad you didn't go through the details of that very comprehensive, minuscule printing. Thank you.
Also, the library, we're holding off to the extent possible on any library components, given the status of that. We just don't want to invest money where we don't get it back. We are also, basically, on our major facility assets, we've got very good staff, we have proactive preventative and rehabilitative maintenance programs, and so we're running this stuff basically to failure. We just need to make sure we stay right on top of it. If we're going to run it to failure, we need to make sure we stay right on top of it. Our budgeting proposal would include mid-year delay on some CIP projects. If you run it to failure, then we've got to be ready for unplanned failures, such as the air conditioning failure at the Development Services Center over the summer. And so we will, on any future calendar years or fiscal years, hold money towards the end of the year to make sure we've got it in reserve for failures. A few things we don't have on here, we're still looking at, city facility parking lots, parking garages, water well systems, some big ticket components we need to get our arms around. So here are the list for boarding, or boiler replacements, cooling tower replacements, chiller replacements. This would be then for the component HVAC units. You can see where we've got those proposed. You can also see what we've already got in progress. This year has FY '20 in it. Those are moving forward. FY '21 that are highlighted, those are in our original budget submittal. Generator replacements, that's a life safety issue and an emergency issue. They have to be replaced periodically. Building elevator modernizations, again, some code requirements. Building flooring replacements, this is just a general rag, wag on this component. That's something that if you don't pay attention to, pretty soon, the flooring's in bad condition. We'd like to replace it before. It's an immediate concern. Swimming pools, quite a bit to maintain on those. There's a list of where we would propose spending money on those. And then roofs, roofs we're out to. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Johnson.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. For the record, Mike Johnson, Public Works Director, Mayor Goodman, Member of City Council. Let me just first start off by saying, you know, I've had the pleasure of working side by side with this man, Jerry Walker, for over 20 years, working on infrastructure throughout the city. And when you get a call from a citizen or from a business owner, there's a good chance that if it's related to infrastructure, Jerry or myself worked on either the design, the construction, or the maintenance and operation of those facilities. And so we, both of us, I know, enjoy working with you and your staff, trying to resolve any questions that come up. Maybe, Mayor, I can first address your question related to the fire station. So we have an architectural team under Public Works, and as it relates to fire stations, we work hand-in-hand with the fire department. So as the fire department identifies a gap in their needs for a new fire station, they bring us into the discussion, and when they're ready for us to move a project into design, we go ahead and do that, as funding is available. And a couple of examples I'll give you is, sometimes through a development agreement, the developers require to either fund, construct, or a combination thereof, new fire stations. And we have agreements just like that with Sky Canyon in the Northwest, and then we have similar agreements with Summerlin. And those, of course, are our two largest growth areas. But again, throughout the city, as those needs arise, they first become made aware through fire staff, and then they bring us into the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So I just want to give you a quick snapshot on really a piece of infrastructure that is so vital to our community, particularly during those summer monsoon seasons. This past summer, we lucked out. We didn't have too bad of a summer monsoon season. But this is our infrastructure program related to those regional flood control district facilities. These are the really big boxes, storm drain systems that are underground. We've got close to 200 miles of those systems underground. And the main thing I want to point out to you here, Jerry alluded to it, this is a program where we have outside funding. Mayor Goodman and Councilman Anthony, as board members on the Regional Flood Control District, you see every, every meeting, the work that the great General Manager Steve Parrish and his team do to ensure that those revenues that are generated are allocated appropriately based on need. And those revenues come from a quarter cent sales tax that was passed by the voters back in 1986. So it's a stable source of revenue for this program, and it's covered for both design, construction, as well as maintenance. And so, again, for this program, the main point is, most of the infrastructure is less than 30 years old. This is infrastructure that can easily go 50 years, or as much as 75 years, depending on the velocities that some of these facilities see. So as Jerry said, our storm drain system, we're in, we're in good shape. I want to move on to the unsung hero infrastructure, the stuff no one ever really wants to know until something goes bad, and that's our sanitary sewer collection system. This is an even bigger system throughout the city. You can see we've got about 222 miles of large diameter sewer lines and about 1,635 miles of smaller diameter sewer lines. But one of the great things that some of my predecessors did back in 2000 was, they created a sewer condition assessment program, because they recognized that our sewer system, unlike our flood control system, has a lot of much older lines, some of the lines from the '30s, '40s, '50s. So those ones were definitely aging to where we needed to see what's going on inside those lines. And so the way we do that is, we have an assessment program that, in a nutshell, has a device that has a camera on it that goes through every sewer line to see, is there portions of pipe that's failing, leaking, having any kind of problems? And since that program was established, we've invested $100 million in rehabbing those sewer lines where problems were found. We caught a lot of problems before they ever really became problems, and so it's been a great problem for us to have a solution to. And over the next five years, we have $43 million programmed towards sewer condition assessment and rehab. What I want to point out, that's the most important thing really takeaway from this slide, is we're in the process of doing a new sewer rate study. We have not done one since 2013. As part of that sewer rate study, we're going to capture the needs for additional capacity in some of the sewer lines. We may need a relief sewer, additional sewer lines that may need rehab, plus also sewer lines to service some of our far reaches in the Northwest, where we have some projects that are in the planning stage. I know Mayor Protem, we talk about the Golden Triangle site up there. As part of our sewer rate study, we're going to make sure that we have sewer system capacity throughout the city and for sure at our far reaches. And so, again, just want you to be aware, that rate study is going to be underway throughout 2020, and sometimes towards the end of 2020, we'll be coming back to you with more information on what the impacts may be.
Why haven't we, or have we, knowing that cities started down here at the core, and the pipes obviously were very small, and now we're exploding with the growth all the way around, and it's downhill, why haven't we just automatically taken it and divided it up? We're going to take this inner-city area and widen and widen and widen. I mean, that should be unnatural, I would think.
Good question, Mayor. And the reality is, the topography of the city, we've got different points where certain areas of our streets flow very well, east-west, some of the north-south streets, not as much. And so the sewer collection system, how it services the entire city, is a diverse engineering design of how everything is collected. That's why we just call it the collection system. And so our system is monitored all the time by staff, so we know where we have a shortfall. I'll give you an example. We had a new project coming in off of Colorado and Maine, right near there, Sam Cherry's new project. And when he came in, we were looking at some of the flows that he'd be adding to that sewer line, and we said, well, once that project's in, we're going to have a little bump in some of the lines there. So we've incorporated measures to update the capacity on some of those lines. So it's again, every project that comes through development, we see what the sewer impact will be, update our model, and make sure we can capture and find where we might have a shortfall that we need to plan for.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to switch to our water pollution control facility. You know, it's all about the numbers at the water pollution control facility. Our entire collection system, everything we collect, ends up at our water pollution control facility. And so the capacity of that facility is what we call 61 million gallons a day, is how much we can handle at that plant. Today, the current demand is 47 million gallons a day, and we're growing at about 1.5 million gallons per day per year. So what that, what that means is, we're going to be at a threshold, a specific threshold of 85% capacity on or about 2022. And under a federal and state permit that we have to allow us to operate this facility, And under a federal and state permit that we have to allow us to operate this facility, once we get to 85% capacity, we have to begin design on a plant expansion. And so, the typical expansion that we would be looking to do to accommodate many years of growth would be what we call a 30 million gallon a day plant expansion, so that it could be operational by 2027, which would be the projected year when we'd be at capacity. What I want to point out is, that's not a low-cost investment. It's about $100 million to add 30 million gallons a day capacity to that plant. And the key takeaway here is, that plant capacity expansion, the design and construction of it, will also be captured in the current sewer rate study that we're working on. So, again, just want you to be aware, from that side of the house, significant infrastructure investment is coming down the line. I want to shift gears from sewer to our park and area lighting. So, Public Works maintains all of the lights that are used in our parks, as well as in parking lots throughout the city. And a couple of quick little snapshots for you. The, the part of the parks that's the highest maintenance for our staff is the lighting for the fields. So, we have about 70 flat fields that are, we call them flat fields, that are lighted, and those are the soccer, football, and lacrosse fields. We have about 45 baseball fields, and lots of other sports courts, and then other, other courts. And then, throughout the parks, where you have pathways, there's what's called the area lighting that guides you to your destination throughout the park. The average cost to convert a flat field that has the old technology street lighting, known as metal halide fixtures, is about 150,000 per field, and that is to take a metal halide fixture, which only lasts two to four years, burns out, and staff has to go out and replace them, versus an LED, which is the current state of art. All of our new parks are going with LED across the country. They've improved immeasurably. They last eight to 10 years. So, they have superior customer reliability. And when it comes to fields, the most important thing is that the customers, whether it's our citizens trying to enjoy the field, or teams that have scheduled to use them, that those lights are all working. Otherwise, the, the game is, is not as enjoyable. And so, what we want to do is work towards converting some of our older fields from the metal halide to the LED. We'll get a power savings, we'll get a labor savings, which won't have to be changing them as often. And this past fiscal year, fiscal year '20, we've allocated through a CIP project 300,000 to do a pilot, because the LED technology really was just coming into where it's ready to go. So, we're going to do two fields. And the way we work to address the fields is, we work with our Parks and Recreation Department to find out what fields are the highest usage, so that they'll have that reliability built in when we do this conversion. So, that's what we have on the books for fiscal year '20. We're, I'll have that completed before the end of the fiscal year. And for FY21, we'll be requesting through the CIP process 900,000, so that we could do six more fields. Next major asset to point out is our roadway lighting. This is a huge asset that Public Works maintains. We've got about 55,000 street lights across the city. Couple things I want to point out. Back in 2011, we were early adopters of first-generation LED lights. They had a lot of controversy when they first went out. Those lights came with a 10-year warranty from GE. They've been very, very reliable. But 2011, they're going to be running out of warranty soon, so we don't know if they're going to have a quick failure rate come that 10-year period, or if they may last longer. But that's an asset that's going to need some funding to take care of as those warranties run out. The one set of lighting that we never got around to converting to LED was what we call decorative fixtures. We have 11,000 decorative fixtures. They're mostly in Summerlin, in the town center area in the Northwest, and then downtown, we have decorative fixtures. The reason why we never converted them is because they're smaller market fixtures. The price was so high when LEDs first started coming out. Now, the price has come down to where we can do a conversion for about $1,000 or $1,400 per fixture. And so, this fiscal year, we have programmed 1.5 million for doing conversions of the decorative fixtures. And how do we prioritize them, you might ask? Well, our first priority is those high-volume, high-speed traffic corridors, collectors and arterials. So, we're going to upgrade the lighting on those corridors, about 1,200 lights that we're going to do with this year's allocation. For fiscal year '21, we'd like to continue that program. So, the way we would organize it would be half a million dollars straight from our motor vehicle fuel tax, and then a million dollars through the CIP process that we would put in a request for. Additionally, periodically, the federal government and state government sometimes offers an energy savings loan program, where they'll lend us money at a very low interest rate to advance those conversions, and then we pay it off over time through a bond. So, again, just wanted to let you know where we stand on streetlights. Last column that I have is traffic signals and flashers. We've got about a little over 600 traffic signals. Just today, in our agenda, we approved a contract for six new traffic signals in the Northwest, and there'll be 20 signals under, under construction throughout 2020, new ones. So, this is an asset that's constantly being added. We also have a lot of school flashers, pedestrian flashers, and fire station signals. Just to give you kind of a snapshot of our, of our infrastructure, our oldest traffic signal, still in operation, is at Las Vegas Boulevard in Gas. That signal was built in 1965. It is beyond its useful life. We've been holding it together kind of with Band-Aids, because it's being fully replaced with our Las Vegas Boulevard project. So, the way we've been addressing our infrastructure on signals is, with RTC jobs like Las Vegas Boulevard, all those old signals will be removed, fully replaced. They actually have about a 40- to 50-year life, so these ones are well past that. And then, we also have a brand-new allocation, thanks to the fuel revenue indexing passing, where $750,000 per year, we're going to use specifically towards maintenance of the traffic signals that you see. And with that, that's our presentation. Yes, Mayor?
What happens with the 38, oh, what was it? That was given by Cisco to combine the traffic lights and do more technology with them? But looking to the future, I can't understand why every police car and fire and, and the rescue can't control all the lights as they go through to make four-way. Have we got that in the budget? I mean, they should all go red as soon as they approach. They should go red, everybody stops.
Great questions, Mayor. Actually, two of them you addressed. One was the Cisco grant that we're getting with Michael Sherwood's assistance, and that's going to be a technology addition to our existing traffic signal system that's going to allow us to capture additional data on the operations of the signal throughout the day, how it's addressing pedestrian activities, bicycle connection, transit connection. It's going to give us a whole bunch of operational data that's going to really help us fine-tune the way some of the signals operate. So, we're looking forward to the new information that that tool's going to provide us. And then, as it relates to the fire station signals, we have what's called a fire preemption system. So, when there's an emergency response that's underway, the fire trucks are equipped with a device that will turn the lights in their favor, stop traffic that's, that's in conflict, and give them the green. And so, periodically, there are some devices that fail. And so, we, again, work very closely with fire department's team. A fire captain from a station will say, hey, I was driving down Charleston, and the signal at Torrey Pines didn't preempt. So, we can very quickly, Mayor, address those when we find them, and that's something that we work with really on a daily basis if that need comes in.
Right, and we love that it's synchronized. Thank you. Thanks. Any comments, questions? Yes, Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Jensen, a lot of people, obviously, are inconvenienced when we're tearing up the streets and we're doing upgrades to improve our drainage system, our sewer system. And one question I get, that I don't know the answer to, that hopefully you can shed light on, is they're saying, are we widening the capacity of the load through those lines? Are we increasing what they can handle? I can just, that comes to mind now that it's been raining a bit, and we usually get a little bit of flooding off of eastern, basically, Searls, south to about Stewart. It gets really, really flooded in that area, and so I'm just trying to see if you can connect the dots for me and see if, are we increasing the capacity when we're doing the work? And how diligent are we on the, on our, on our sewer system?
Okay, so, Councilwoman, a couple of questions there, as you had. First off, on the eastern location, what I'll do when we get done with this meeting is, I'll sit down with staff and find out what's the status of the master-planned facilities for that area near eastern and Searls. Offhand, I'm not sure if the system that's out there is what we call a 10-year flood control system or 100-year. So, the systems that really, as an example, Charleston Underpass used to always flood. It has a 100-year facility that now keeps that underpass from flooding. The system that might be at that location on eastern Searls might be the 10-year system, so that when we have a more significant rainfall, it floods. I don't know the answer offhand, but I'll, I'll look through that and I'll get back to you on it. The second question on, are we adding capacity? On most of our projects, the primary purpose is to add capacity. As an example, on the Las Vegas Boulevard project, it has a storm drain from the 50s in there. That's, portions of it have collapsed, portions of it are just, over, over so many years, it's not carrying as much capacity as it used to carry. So, as part of the Las Vegas Boulevard project, we're increasing the size of the pipe, we're adding more inlets. So, sometimes, there's not enough inlets on the corridor to capture that water. So, I would say, almost every project we do is an upgrade to capacity. Sometimes, it's because the line is old and needs to be replaced, sometimes because the line doesn't even exist. So, I hope that answers your question. And then, maybe just the last piece was disruption to businesses and residents. David's presentation was perfect, where that new methodology that we have when we start a project to get the message out, hey, we're going to be starting construction on this date, if you see any concerns, you can reach us this way. David's team is one of the first groups that, when we start a project, if something pops up, we can, it's almost instantaneous. I think David mentioned, his staff gets the request at night, on the weekends, and we get it, and we can get it right out to our contractor and our construction management team to try to address it. And then, we also have, on all of our projects, we have a facilitator that we have assigned to the project, that is basically the person between the contractor and the city. So, when a citizen or a business owner has a concern, rather than one of us kind of giving them the answer, we have that facilitator go in, get the, get the concern, and bring it back to both of us. We try to work it out, and we really try our best to minimize the disruptions. It's just pretty hard when you, when you have to dig the road up. There's, there's no easy way around it, but we, we certainly try our best.
Thank you, Mike. And if I could have another question to Mr. Walker, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. I know that we're all having to work with the upgrades and the improvements, and I'm just thinking, you know, forward when there might be a greater need to connect to sewer, because we're developing, so just making sure that we're adding more capacity to what we have, thinking that there might be more there to serve more people. And to Mr. Walker, I just wanted to ask, because recently, actually through fabulous communication of social media, someone messaged me a concern about not having ADA access to a park in my ward, and I was wondering if we have looked at that, if we have the curbs to where someone in a wheelchair would have access to enter and exit our parks facilities? Because if they're going to the park by themselves, but there's no way to get on the sidewalk, it makes that challenging, and then they need the help from somebody that's nearby. So, have we thought about this, and are we entertaining looking at that?
We've surveyed all of the parks, and there's been a fair amount of money spent on inside the parks, making sure they're ADA compliant. And anything that's been built since the mid-'90s should be ADA compliant, but ADA adopted in '92. With respect to our roadways, we've expanded our ADA programs, and we are proactively going out now and spending about 1.5 million dollars a year on ramps. We're engaging a cut-and-grind contractor to address lifted panels. But whenever we get a concern that somebody can't get from point A to point B, we will look at it and do everything we can to get them from point A to point B. So, if you'll forward that to me. If it's just a matter of ramps, it's never a problem to construct ramps, it's just a matter of schedule. Occasionally, we get into a little bit of trouble, though, if there's an overhead power line or obstructions of that type. Those are a little more difficult to deal with. I'm assuming the person's having trouble getting from their house to the park. You forward that to me, and I'll check the lane, and if it's just a matter of ramps, we'll have those in within a couple of months.
Thank you, Tabo.
Fabulous. I mean, all I can tell you is the work that you both do, and we're so lucky, just really lucky. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And so, now we will pick up Agenda Item 62, which is a report from Brad Gerbik, City Attorney, regarding an update on the purchase sale and assignment of the Huntridge Theater and the four related parcels of real property located southeast corner East Charleston and South Maryland Parkway. And again, this is in Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz, and hi.
Good morning.
Hope you had a good Thanksgiving.
Pardon?
Hope you had a good Thanksgiving.
I do have a good Thanksgiving. I hope you all did, too. The, so, I'll be really brief this morning. Good news, the escrow opened on the Huntridge last month between Jay Dapper and King George LLC, which is Ms. Rocky family that owns it. The good faith money has been deposited. Jay has already been in there multiple times. He's got the keys to the building. He's been there with his architect. The, if all goes well, the earliest close of escrow through Fidelity National Title Group will be June 24th of next year. But if it takes a little bit longer, because they find some things that take a little more research, the latest closing date will be April 24th of next year. We've also been working with the State of Nevada, State Historic Preservation Office, and their legal team to see if we can resolve the issues that are outstanding with respect to the roof and repayment that's owed the state, and I think that's going pretty well so far. And we've been giving tours. So, anybody who wants to go see it, anytime you want to see it, give me a call, and we'll be glad to show you. We had Councilwoman Diaz down last week.
You were on TV, both of you were on TV.
It's fun, it's fun to go there. We bring, you'd be amazed, you invite five people and 20 show up. It's just really cool. But that's it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Gerbik, that you meant to say August instead of April of next year? So, June 24th?
It's actually, it's actually June 24th is the clue. They have a six-month date, would be June 24th, because they opened escrow on November 25th, and so he had six months. So, that brings him, he's got 30 days to do some things, and then 60 days, six months from that to do the due diligence. It could be sooner, but I can tell you-
Okay, but you mentioned an April date after the June, and I was just confused which date was the one.
Yeah, there's nothing that we've found that has surprised anybody so far. Here's what has to happen. In order for him to finally close on the project, he's going to have to get some entitlements, because there are going to be some new buildings out there that require some rezoning. And so, those kinds of things typically take three to four months in the system. So, they're working as fast as they can, but you've seen Jay before and seen the projects he's done around town. He, he doesn't drag his feet. So, as soon as we can get it done, we will.
Great, thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and happy holidays to all of you.
Thanks, yes, we love it. Okay, we will now move on to 65. Okay, whoops. And that is set the appeal, set date for appeals filed or required public hearing, so I'm going to ask the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings and dangerous buildings and/or nuisance litter abatements.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. And now, we will go to our second, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as a matter of time, any single speakers allowed may be limited. This is your opportunity to address city council, but the council's not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda, and I see we have a card from Donald Walford, so please come forward and give us your name. You've been very patient sitting there this morning.
Oh, it's, it's fine. Like you said, my name's Donald Walford. I have a business at 1212 South Casino Center, Las Vegas, Nevada. I want to, I know that the two items have been abated, item 59 and 60, I want to make a comment on that. But first, I want to recognize something that happened here today that made me very proud, to be a citizen of Las Vegas, to see the, the mayor and the council recognize our fire department and our police department. The fire department, I've got to know, I'm a chaplain with Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, and I know the dedication that those men and women have, and to see the, you don't know how much it means to them, because I hear it, is how you appreciate them. And with Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, I also have a connection where three of my sons are sworn officers.
Wow.
And my, I have a daughter that's a civil employee there. And I have to tell you that while the SWAT officers were up here, I saw one young man who was on the wrestling team with two of my sons here in Las Vegas. I saw another one that was with my, one of my sons during the October 1st shooting. Both of them were awarded the Medal of Valor. And so, you don't see that in many, in, I don't see that in every city, where the city and their agencies, especially the, the police department, have that kind of relationship. So I want to say as a citizen that I appreciate your efforts there. What I would like to say about the, or comment on the two items, 59 and 60, is I'm a part of a group of citizens, residents, business owners like myself and clergy. And we just had some questions that we would like to sit down with the applicant and talk about. We know that this was passed in planning by consent. We paid the money to have it re-noticed and we've been trying to contact the applicant that we, who we feels the applicant. We've even gone through our councilwoman's office to try to facilitate a meeting just so that we, neighbor to neighbor could talk, what are your plans? You know, what are kind of things like that? To no avail. And I don't, I don't know, but I know it's been abated for two weeks. I just want to see if they could contact us and set up a short meeting.
I mean, certainly, I think, well, first of all, let me back up to your comments. This council knows and appreciates everything that our first responders, our law enforcement, our fire and rescue do.
That's due.
There has never been a time, at least in the nine years that I've been sitting here and sitting next to this gentleman who spent 29 years of his life with Metro. I just, we all know without the safety that we have had the good luck to experience and the dedication and devotion for people who never know if they're going to be coming home that day. So it goes without saying there's 100% support here. And I think it's a very different time unfortunately in the world and there's too much anger and hatred than not here. So thank you for that.
Well, you know, I have found that the, our local government here, especially the city of Las Vegas, has been very approachable. And it's more like a neighborhood than a city that you would think of. It's very, you know, once you know somebody, it's very small.
Well, and we're a family.
And that's the kind of approach I'd like to take with the applicant. We're all citizens, we're all neighbors.
Right. So what I'm going to say in reference to numbers 59 and 60 and knowing Councilwoman Diaz, open, open door all the time, good listener, wants to do the right thing for the people in Ward Three. So I'm going to turn to her right now and just work your way through this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We also, like you, had some reservations and had heard from other business owners about their concerns and we're also trying to obey the item so that we could get some communication going between who wants the license and our office. And we'll continue to try to be persistent in getting a meeting going so that we can get our questions answered. So as soon as we hear from them, we'll definitely extend the invite out to you.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate you, Mayor, and the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Walford, oh, and Stace, can I give you his card so we don't lose it? You have, must have the information, right, Councilwoman Diaz? Yes, you have all the information. Okay. Thank you. We're working on the suggestion box. I just want you to know that in the card. And so your previous submission to us with an idea.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
An idea that you had had about suggestions and how they are received and our attention to those. We are definitely working with the clerk's office and working on a way that we can make suggestion cards available to the public for the new ideas that come in and appreciate your coming back.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Daniel Braystead, I'm passing out an email that I sent to a number of the council people. One of the challenges is of course revenue for events. And the mayor about, I don't know, four months ago asked somebody to look into sponsorships for an event. And I attend a few events in the community centers. One is the dance group. And as I mentioned here, I would like to go to them and be a sponsor for their events and in exchange, I would be able to hang a banner in the event on the walls. And the challenge with that is you don't want nails on the walls and you don't want some tape because it pulls the paint off and et cetera, et cetera. And so I was recommending that you route and put a piece of cork board, foot centers up and down so that you could bring in the banner and just stick it. And then when you're done, you just take it home. And I think it's a source of revenue. And I've been visiting all the computer labs in the community centers and all their walls are empty. And it'd be a great way to be able to come in and hang a banner saying, hey, these websites offer free stuff. Or if my company is offering free computer training, then I would like to be able to put my banner up and get some credit. So it's just something I passed in and if anybody had any comments or so, just let me know, my phone number's on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to Agenda Item 67, which is council member recognition. Whoops. And council member recognition comments made by individual council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the council unless this subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. So I always know everybody has something to say. So we're going to start on the inside this time, which means we'll start with you, Councilman Anthony, and work our way out.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. Let's see what comes up first. All right, so on December 13th, you can come out at 6:00 PM to the Drangle Hills Community YMCA at Drangle and Gowan and enjoy a free viewing of Elf. It's open to everyone. We'll have some popcorn and some hot chocolate while supplies last. Again, it's free. Come out, bring your kids or whoever you want to bring and you can watch this movie and I'll be there and you can commiserate with all your neighbors. And then the second one is the Polar Express. So this is not the Polar Express movie. This is a unique experience that will be held at the Simron Rose Community Center at Simron and Ann Road. I'm not going to tell you what it is because it's going to be a surprise if you show up. You have to purchase tickets by December 6th. It's $5 apiece. There'll be two nights to attend. They're both the same nights, the same events on those nights, December 18th and December 19th at 6:00 PM. This is going to be something that you do not want to miss. It's going to be a lot of fun. Tickets are $5, $7 the night of the event. Again, purchase your tickets before December 6th. And it'll be December 18th, 19th at the Simron Rose Community Center. And I will also be out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So tonight we have our Golden Night game and the game starts at 4:00 PM Pacific time. We're going to go right into our Christmas Fantasy Forest. I was so excited to go there last night and light up our trees. I have to tell you, our staff, our cultural affairs, Kristy Garnis, we're just very lucky to have them. So Santa Claus will be there Friday, this Friday at 5:00. And it's the real Santa. He's flying his sleigh in from North Pole. So meet us there Friday at 5:00 to take your holiday pictures with Santa. And he'll be there Saturday and Sunday as well from 2:00 to 5:00 until the end of December. So our fantasy forest is amazing. So meet out there this Friday. On a serious note, we have a missing juvenile, Kenton Tillman. He goes by Draco. He's a male. He's 17 years old. He's only five foot nine, 130 pounds. He's African American. He was last seen in the area of South Main Street and Bridger Avenue. And it's unknown what he was wearing. So if you have any information on Draco Kenton Tillman, please call Las Vegas Metro Police, 702-828-3111, or Nevada Child Seekers, 702-458-7009. We also have another missing girl. She's 17 years old as well. She's a female. She's got reddish brown hair, hazel eyes. She's Caucasian. Her front tooth is chipped. Her name is Madison Jane Lorraine, sublet. So if you, her last area where people saw her was the area of Teddy. She was wearing a gray sweater with black pants. So please, if anyone has any information on Madison, please call Las Vegas Metro Police at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Child Seekers at 702-458-7009. One of the things I really like to share is our homeless success stories. And in our corridor of hope, we have Obie Brody Jr. And we're going to recognize Obie. He was intermittently homeless since 2017. And in 2018, he began volunteering at the courtyard and was eventually hired as operations worker. With his new employment, he was able to secure and maintain an apartment and end his homelessness. Obie was recently promoted to lead operations worker at our courtyard. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have traditional ceremonial, but I do want to recognize our illustrious fraternity as you guys have seen them come down. Today is 113th anniversary of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, which was founded December 4th, 1906 on the campus of Cornell University. And it was established as the first African-American fraternity, intercollegiate fraternity in the world. And I just want to just take, just one second to read a quick poem in recognition of it. And it's called "To Be an Alpha Man" by our fraternity brother FH Woodruff. And it says, "To be an alpha man means more than just to wear a pin. It inquires, it requires intrinsic qualities that are developed deep within. It calls for lasting brotherhood, a word sometimes used in vain. It means an honest devotion, not anticipation of personal gain. Fraternity speaks of brotherly love. That's something to achieve. It's more than just a grip of hand, it's just an ideal to conceive. You're proud to be an alpha and share your praises, one. Before you inflict yourself with pride, ask yourself honestly, how much have I done? To realize the wealth of personal satisfaction from knowing you've given your all, to have helped your cause unflatteringly when you rallied to her call. To combine all these qualities and root them deep within, the product would be an alpha man deserving of his pin. So take an honest inventory of your character within and for every virtue you find missing, try and weave it in. For a man without these virtues isn't worth a grain of sand. It's plain to see, it's more than just a pin that makes an alpha man." So I want to give a quick O6 to my brothers out there. And we're all about manly deeds, scholarship and love for all mankind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes.
May I point out that Councilman Creer is wearing his alpha tie?
Yes.
Oh, good. Councilman Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. I wish I had a poem now. But I'm, I'm still happy to represent the most aesthetically pleasing part of our community. This Friday is a special version of Brews with Brian, which is very popular. We're doing it at the Holiday Coffee at the Leibern Senior Center from 9:30 to 11:00. Leibern is located at 6230 Garwood Avenue.
And what are the cross streets?
Oh, my gosh, you would ask that? I can drive there, but I'm trying to think of the street because I don't look at the streets anymore.
How do you get there then?
You go up Charleston. Actually, you go up Alta and then you turn right onto Gar Side and you go past the fire station and then there's the two seniors, Leibern and Mary Valley right there.
Okay. Everybody, you got that?
Yes.
Go have Brews with Brian, okay?
Coffee brews for the morning time. Yes, a very appropriate coffee.
Okay.
We also have a Charlie Brown Christmas performance at the Charleston Heights Art Center through the mid-month.
So cute.
Magical Forest at Opportunity Village, which is winter wonderland of over a million sparkling lights. And I was there for the Christmas tree lighting. Mayor, I think I just missed you. You came in right after me.
I knew you were coming and would take over.
That's true. So I got there before and took over. Yes, it was very, very cold, but it's a fun night for a family. And then also Holiday Express at the Springs Preserve, which is a magical train ride to Santa's Village. There are multiple departures each day, but reservations are required at springspreserve.org.
And that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Santa coming to your house for your little ones?
He will. I can't wait.
I can't wait. I hope there's no coal in the stockings. That's what I used to get in our stocking. So on to you, Councilwoman Seaman, please.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. So we have our monthly breakfast buzz this Saturday at Eggworks from 9:00 to 10:00. Breaking bread with constituents, been a very, very popular event. So we hope you'll come. It's free to the public. We also have a very good event coming up for everyone who wants to take the Safe Talk certification course. This is the time of year where we need to be aware of suicide. So it's a suicide alertness course. And we are sponsoring it. So if you would like to come, it is Saturday, December 14th from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Veterans Memorial Community Center, Classroom 6. And we are still doing our weekly Small Business Sundays. So if you have a business in Ward Two, we are happy to come out and film your business and let all the neighbors know about what you're doing. And so we have some little friends who need some holiday homes. The Animal Foundation Pet Adoptions this week. We have a little man who is a neutered male, age eight, weighs 11.2 pounds and he is adorable. Then we have Patch, who's a female, age five years old, nine pounds. Then we have Bella, who's a spade female, five years and 54 pounds. Last, we have Sunset, spade female, age two years, 7.1 pounds. These little animals need a home. So if you are interested, please contact the adoption department and their phone number's Again, it's the Animal Foundation that you can adopt these pets. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Diaz, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everyone had a fabulous, safe and well-rested Thanksgiving holiday. I know that I was able to partake in just family time and getting back to talking to mom, dad and brothers and sisters and having a lot of good food. And I barely fit in my suit today, but it's okay. You only live once and you got to eat the meals, right? So going to events that are happening here in Ward Three, we have the grand opening of what is currently known as the Las Vegas Wash Park tomorrow, Thursday, December 5th at 3:30. And I invite all of my colleagues and park commissioners and especially my neighbors to come and partake in tomorrow's festivities. We will have a winter wonderland with cookies and hot cocoa. So come, it's on the east side of Lamb on Washington. I believe it's like 4880 Washington Avenue. So come on down tomorrow. Next, we have Santa in the Circle. So this used to be an event that was hosted at the Circle Park, but because Circle Park is not available to our community currently, we will be replacing the location with our fabulous and newly renovated Baker Park. So come and join us Saturday, December 7th, starting at 10:00 AM. Santa's going to be there. We're going to have cookie exchange and there's going to be amazing performances from the Las Vegas Ballet School and the Downtown Dance Conservatory. So come on over for a good time with our neighbors. Baker Park, 1100 East St. Louis. We also have an upcoming neighborhood meeting to discuss the complete street improvements for the Seventh Street Project. These are so important. We need your feedback. We need your input. So if you can make it on down Tuesday, December 10th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Historic Fifth Street School, 401 South Fourth Street. Don't miss it. So next Tuesday, December 10th, 4:00 to 6:00, it's to talk about complete street improvements for the Seventh Street Project. Next, we have a joint neighborhood association meeting for John S. Park, Huntridge, Beverly Green, Hillside Heights and Crestwood neighbors. There's going to be a lot of information provided here that we're excited to share. And we will also have a cookie exchange and a collaborative group session. So come on over to Shadow Hills Downtown Campus on 700 East St. Louis Avenue, Tuesday, December 10th as well at 6:00 PM. So we're going to be conflicted whether we go to one meeting or the other, but pick the one that's most important to you and we hope to see you swing by either one. And I think I might have one more. It's been a longstanding Ward Three tradition to have a sit-down dinner, holiday dinner, turkey with all the trimmings for our seniors. And you can call us to RSVP. It will be held at the East Las Vegas Community Center, 250 Northeastern Avenue. Santa holiday music, dancing and raffle prizes will be available to all the participants. So please call our offices, 702-229-4623, or 702-229-6851. So we can take your reservations and we're taking those through December 10th or until full. So please get your spot in this upcoming celebration with us at the East Las Vegas Community Center. And I believe that might be my last announcement, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And to close out, it's for everybody, you know, back in town, then Southern Nevada, National Finals Rodeo has come to town this weekend. And you know, we have become a central piece of that downtown here. We have the Core Arena on Main Street, right opposite City Hall, the only outdoor rodeo event center located at the Plaza and Casino. You'll see live rodeo events, a junior competition, but most of it is open to the public. So do go to the plazahotelcasino.com website. You can get more information there. We'll be kicking off the season on Fremont Street and the We'll be kicking off the season on Fremont Street. And this is at Friday, Saturday morning, we have the Opportunity Village Santa Run at eight o'clock at the Fremont Street Experience. And we also have our annual tree lighting, which will take place on Third Street, half of which at the Fremont Street Experience, half is in Councilwoman Diaz's ward, and half is in, we'll cut the tree in half, in Councilman Creer's ward. So that is December eleventh at 5:00 PM. We also, because I've always asked everybody, wait till the next council to do your events unless they are reserving something, a time on your calendar. We have the menorah lighting on Sunday, the December twenty-second, at four thirty at the Fremont Street Experience. We have Kwanzaa being kicked off in Ward Five in the West Las Vegas Library Saturday, the twenty-eighth of December. And that goes from ten in the morning to 5:00 PM. And I told you about the Santa Run. And let's see if there's anything else. Oh, if you're out at the airport, for heaven's sakes, look down in the baggage claim. All of the signage there has advertisement for our loop and our free bus ride downtown. And it looks fabulous. So very exciting. So everybody coming into Las Vegas knows that we're still Old Vegas, and we do things for free. So you can go all around Las Vegas, and you can go to the premium outlets north. You can go to the hotels, the museums. It's just suburb, the advertisements out at the airport. I think it's the first time in a long time we've been advertising out at the airport, catching everybody coming in. So we're very excited about that. And our next city council meeting is December eighteenth here at nine o'clock. And I want everybody to remember, today is the first day of the rest of your life. First day of the rest of your life. We're going into a season that really should be a giving season by all of us to help others and do wonderful things, but also a time for us to give thanks for the privileges we enjoy. And I must tell you, all of us sitting up here at this dais, know that all the time, we thank our city staff for the hard work and devotion and commitments they have made to make life better for everybody. So as usual, I close with thanking our law enforcement, our fire and rescue, certainly our technology, public, public information who keeps us all appointed. Great reports today. And our city manager, our clerk, the entire staff that make everything happen here. And to all of my colleagues on this dais, it's just great fun and always a learning experience. And so exciting to be part of this very vibrant and forward-thinking community where results are what we're about. We're just tired of watching things that don't get attended to. So thank you all. And we will see you. We're going to adjourn. And our next meeting is December eighteenth, Wednesday at 9:00 AM. So we'll see you then. Have a happy holiday season, and thank you.